Okay.
Okay. It is 9:02, Tuesday, January 26th. Let's call the meeting to order. Minister reports received in five.
The December 7th is the 5th of May.
Okay. Commissioner liaison reports, upcoming meeting events.
We've got wayfinding informational meeting today at City Hall. Jeff, City Public Works. Tomorrow we've got board of relatives, directors meeting. There's informational meeting for sales tax and G. Coffee meeting. Y'all going on that? Leadership Friday. Gala's Friday night. Saturday night we've got the annual dinner in the wards. And the library's got some panel house today. Y'all get that in attention.
Yep.
And the next third day is the extension dinner, annual dinner. Y'all want to go to that?
Next Wednesday's Lions 60th ham and bean and chili.
It's not about you, Sam.
No, it's not.
So you're saying we don't want to?
I don't know when salmon's not going to work.
You know why they put 239 beans in there? Be a bit any more than 240. 240, I mean. I got all day. Do that whenever you're here.
I can't believe you fell for that.
You better go, Sam.
Oh. I move we reset.
Be careful with that one. You just made a motion, we can go there.
We glad talking. He said that's next month, is that right?
No. Any signs that we buying with that wayfinding?
That's not my favorite thing.
I'm sure it's not.
I think there's some questions about where they're going. I know the east side has not got as many as they wanted. Or maybe even their own color or something, so I don't know. They're expensive.
Mm-hmm.
So. I don't remember exactly.
I got an MM RPC meeting tomorrow with New and Ashland. And I heard the national tax and G thing, did you see that? About Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay.
I got. We have a National Guard meeting tomorrow. Chamber Gala, boy, they're going to have some great emcs this year, so everybody needs to come. I'm not even going to.
I think you need to deviate from the screen. I think you need to just add that a little bit. You want me to upright some stuff for it?
You want to take over and take my place?
Let me. Because I think we all call it the goodwill chamber tour and everybody goes to goodwill and you challenge your other couple wherever and buy their outfits with a $10.
This is black tie optional.
I think we just.
I think we can.
You probably sponsored that, so.
Is it black tie? So I can't get blue?
It is black tie.
I was going to get blue.
It's optional.
I think it's blue.
Oh, black tie's optional, that's why you can get blue.
Well, black tie just means four tuxedos.
Sam's got all the.
Four tuxedos. Black or blue.
Okay, let's keep moving. Bits and contracts, pest control renewal discussion, contract signing.
This would be the first renewal on this contract with Mike's Pest Control with no cost increase from last year when it was bid.
Well. What you do those look so inspired with it? Thanks, Chris.
Was it for all buildings or?
Yeah.
Did they finally get all that stuff taken care of at the health department?
Yes. It's been done for several, several months now.
I move we sign the contract with Mike's Pest Control.
Sorry.
All in favor? Contract Google for the Chamber.
I did not put that on, so I'll.
Just because I had it put on there after they announced that.
Are they going to come give us our report on that or?
No. If you want, we can have it before, but usually you know that.
I think we left.
We're just going to approve the contract and get that. Did you print out a copy of that, Jill?
I left it out. I had sent that to you all and pointed out the differences from last year's contract and asked if that was okay. Nobody said one way or the other. I can print it out right now if you guys are all okay with that.
Yeah, I'll just get it on and get it done.
Okay.
We were going to do anything else this year.
Chris, were you good with those changes?
We adjusted the budget.
I was good with the changes. I mean, there was a couple things that they needed to show us, which we don't have to do right now.
Okay, I'll print it out.
They're supposed to show us where they spent all our money.
We can have them come and do a demo for you, kind of like they do once a year.
Are they?
Sorry, Jeff. Come on, smart. Sixteen, twenty minutes.
I think they're looking at February 19th, I think, actually. Have a presentation to the county and the city.
Okay.
So they're still trying to set a date. So and I don't know if that will be, that's probably, it's probably going to be the change. Well, we could keep.
Are they going to give us a notice on that or? Try to get about a day's notice of the meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, they had sent out to their boardman, Janice Wachenberg and all those. They were still trying to get everybody to come back with a date that would work for all of them. And I think the last I got was the 19th February, seemed to work, and I think it's 7:30 a.m. So I don't think it's, it's set yet, but I think that's probably going to be the date. Do you want to come back to that when after Joe runs that off?
Fine.
Okay. Signing of the agreement with River City Habitat for Humanity for 2016.
And again, this is the contract that was in the budget for this year. Jill looked over the contract and she said, it's all right. I didn't know if you wanted these entities to come before you or if you're just ready to sign the contract.
They're going to use it on construction of new Habitat home at 1405 East High.
We are still good that this is the final year of all this, right?
I think our letter said it may, maybe.
Yeah, the letter said it's stronger.
Yes, it said it may be, it's maybe.
This is a good one, it gets it back on the textbook.
I don't disagree. I can say they're all good, like I've said that before.
Oh.
So is it a may or is it a no, Sam?
I think the letter that we sent out, that we all agreed on was this may be the last year for it. And I think that, I think that was the wording, wasn't it?
That was the wording.
Yes.
That was the wording, I'm just asking you, is this the last year?
I said change it to may because we didn't say it was the last year. We decided.
Yeah, I think, you know, if we decide we want to cut out everything, then we can, we can do that.
Which ones are you wanting to cut for sure? Or you want to get rid of all of them?
All of them.
I don't know, I think we got by statute, we can do these things, or we contract with other people and do stuff that we don't have to redo, so. I don't have a problem with some of them, some of them I do have a problem with, but in general, if you got two of us, four to one. I'm not saying it's going to be the last year.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't, I've heard no right now, Chris, I really don't. They just, they are just responding back to the letter we sent them and telling us, you know, that it is being used for new construction. And we had told them we had $10,000. $10,000, I'll keep that stuff.
Well, without me.
I'll make a motion, we sign the contract with River City Habitat for Humanity for 2016.
I second.
All right, just a call.
Broke call.
Sam?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
So we're going to do that one salute? We'll wait till that one comes out. All right.
What'd you eat that yogurt?
I let my phone die down completely on the battery today, so I'm an in person now, man. That was a tough little bit in my life. I'm not used to that, I don't let it get a little 50%.
Okay.
That would drop me nuts. The world cannot function if I don't have a phone.
Do we want to go back to the contract with the Chamber?
There's two copies.
If there's other stuff we want them to do, we can put that in there. I think they've done pretty much what we've asked them to do. We don't have another option as far as economic development.
Right.
As far as that goes right now, so if we want to look at different avenues, we're still fine. But for now, I think we need to keep going with the Chamber.
I agree.
I'd just like to see item two here, it says the Chamber shuts to the county in separate accounting of all economic development expenditures, including the specific use of the county's contribution. So I'd just like to see the details.
I will ask Debbie to present that to us after the meeting.
I will hold up on the quarterly invoices and ask you guys if you said.
Is this still written up in there to do quarterly?
Quarterly, yeah.
Actually, the first payment wasn't due until.
Do right now.
Thirty seven thousand five hundred dollars before March 1st. Thirty seven thousand five by January 1st. Thirty seven five by September 1st. Thirty seven five by December 1st.
Is that a change? I thought I saw one that said it was like 75,000 to.
Last year, it was.
No, it was late.
Yeah.
Okay. Good enough. I move that we approve and sign the contract with the Chamber.
Second.
All in favor? Signing of contract adjustments for the deputy sheriff's salary supplemental fund.
This is just a contract adjustment stating that we're going from monthly to bi-weekly payments. There's no change in the amount for everybody, it's just you split up differently.
And that we sign the contract for the deputy sheriff's salary supplement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you hand me those Chamber contracts? Jeff wants a copy. And the River City. And the River City.
Get the other one.
If Habitat was him.
Signing of language link agreement.
This is an interpretive service. Oh, yeah.
It's for interpretation.
Right, that's telephone service.
It just per use or?
Right, because we only get charged if we use it at 62 cents a month and we rarely ever have to do connection.
I move that we sign the contract with language link.
Thank you. Yes, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
All right.
I must have missed.
No, I was just thinking, how did she get so lucky for us about to take her to the ringer, like we all these other ones. Paying the contract.
You must like me.
And I was reading something on here and said, thank you. Thank you. So I don't get that on very many of them.
Okay. Medical director contractor renewal, Mike.
General, we've got the contract for this year, 2016. Required to have physician oversight for reading this service. That's a renewal for Dr. Lee, he's going to be a free stand.
Is this a second renewal, third renewal? Is it just an ongoing renewal?
It's personnel. We tried to, what year was that? We tried to get people to have an interest in 10, maybe 11. Take it personally to the hospitals, talk to the right people, and no one submitted anything, so.
Because it's a R of Q or something, it's professional services. I don't know, we can run it. Yeah, I think it's a waste of time probably, so.
Okay. So I think it wasn't due to like the first two months. We really need, we need to take action.
I move that we sign the contract for medical director agreement with Dr. Lee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Probably get this like on a November, November agenda, so we're not doing this after the fact.
I usually do, that's kind of my thing. And I asked Mike about it and then beyond.
Well, between the both.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, unfinished business? New business accounts payable review?
We don't have accounts payable.
New county website viewing?
Well, I thought I would do a demo of our new website, but still the production website, but I wanted to have you guys look at it and kind of get your opinion on it. I think it's been well received by everybody that so far as it's seen it. First thing, yeah, let me change the screen real quick just here. All right. Well, when this screen, the banner here is, of course, let's say capital, which we've got two pictures of that on there, which we are going to change out probably at least one. But every time you refresh the page, the banner's going to change, so. Or every time you leave and come back, it will be probably a little bit different. But right now there's three, but we can sit as many as we want, we can change it to whatever we want. Anyway, so this is what people will see when they first come up to the website. They will have the opportunity to be able to create an account for themselves. That way, if they would want to sign up for any kind of notification, they can click this notify me button. And it takes them to a page where they type in their email address and there's several different alerts that they can sign up for. Bid postings, they can sign up for newsletters, news from individual offices, or they can get everything if they want to. They can get it by text or email. So also if an agenda or something is released, they can sign up just to get agendas and things like that. There's also on the front page, you've got the agendas, the minutes, but where they can go and see the agendas. If there are minutes attached there, we'll be a little indication of that. There's also going to be, we'll be able to have the archived string video connected to that too. So there'll be a little icon of a TV in one of the, in one of the columns. So people can go download the whole thing, there's different options that they have whenever they go to the page. Like I said, they can sign up to get alerts every time a new agenda is set out. And these buttons are all, you know, customizable. We have something we want to add, we can add something else or take something off. Watch meeting. We've got a button that's got the live commission meeting. I'll even show it on there right now. So it's embedded and when we're not in session, it will show that, that image that we have on there for when we're not in session. And it's also got the link to the new calendar. So the calendars, we have, we have news and announcements down here, which is for kind of, this is, you know, current events in the county that we can kind of put a little more about. Other offices can also have their news and events and announcements on their page and they can choose to link it to this one, so we can get feeds from all the offices on this page if we want. Calendar, we've got our county events, we've got a few items on there now. Community events, people will be able to go to the calendar, community calendar and enter their events and.
They can put like parish picnics, Indian festival in Russellville.
Yeah.
Things like that.
And so we'll have to decide who's going to approve that, because we don't want them to.
They don't have broad sales.
Yeah. But, you know, they'll just go to, they'll just go to the calendar and they'll submit an event and then somebody here will approve it or deny it. And so there are a lot of different ways that you can kind of get around. The government app has just different departments. There's a few of the links that I'm not sure that we still need, but. So this is an example of one of those department pages. These are still, the different departments are still working on it left. We, we, we had our training and everybody, all the offices were represented, which was great. They have an EMS, which we will be working with them. What I plan on doing is everybody kind of really picked it up. It's a lot easier than I was, you know, better than I hoped for. But, you know, after you have the training, then a couple weeks goes by, it's good to have a refresher. So what we're going to do is Thursday, have another like informal training here in the, in the commission chamber. And kind of a work day, so we can kind of work through some of the issues that Mike you have. And so it's just really clean and easy to navigate. So. Public Works, I know Andy and Carrie have been working really hard on that. They've been adding parks and things like that, so.
You have the Parks Director in our line. I feel I retired. I can't do without my right hand, man.
That's a rough ground. So then, you know, different people have different ideas of how things should be searched more. So like you can also go to services and find your EMS and they've got it under different So the residence link, there's just, there's just different ways to get to the same kind of place. It just gives you more options to find things. We do, there are a few things, like there's a community voice module, I'm not sure if that somebody want to use, it's like a message, like a discussion forum for different topics. The reported concern, I don't know if we really need that as a form because we have content, really easy to find contact information for each individual office, so I don't know what that particular one we go to. So that one, we might want to think about taking off. And also, when we were developing the website, we asked the public to send in their photographs because we were looking for banner photos. A lot of those weren't suitable for our banner. So what I would like to do is have a community photo webpage so that their photos can still be seen and then people can still, like, if they want to submit their photos.
Do we have a photo when we had Jeff update that?
I don't have that one, but I would get that one.
You want it?
I think I got one on my phone.
So I was wondering, you got, I'm doing one.
I mean, I think that, you know, that would be a bad thing to have. We could have also where we have approval process of like the calendar is that they can get their picture.
You might want to talk about the job, they say where we got a contract job.
Yeah.
When you draw.
So then we also have the how do I, this is kind of, okay, I want to know how do I pay my taxes or how do I get a marriage license? How do I apply for jobs? So this is kind of where people would go from that. The jobs page, what we've done is we've made a category for each department. And what we're going to do is ask each department to, to put their jobs on this page, not on their own page, and then link to this. Because this one, somebody searching for a job and say it's a sheriff's office or Public Works or whatever, they can then go write to it or else they can go to the jobs page and be able to search all of the jobs the county has available. So I think this will be a really good one-stop shop type of place for that. And I'm really happy with the color scheme and kind of, I think it looks really modern and I'm really happy with it. Everybody's feeling on it. Here we've got the contact information. Melody Appke to add the surface court to it because she gets a lot of calls from that, so I think that'll help her a lot, having that there. Down here, and I'm, I'm kind of considering putting these also under residence, but these are the links, if there is a website for the different communities, then these will link to it. And then the ones that don't have websites, I'm thinking about just making a link to maybe Wikipedia or something over this ground here, some kind of information about that page, the population, things like that. This website is accessible, ADA accessible. And it's responsive, so if I, you know, make my page smaller, it's going to change with Moving it around. Of course, when we get the mobile app, that one's going to make, that one's going to be more responsive for your cell phone and your devices. So basically, I just wanted to kind of do a demo, I wanted to give you guys the link to so you can look at it and then kind of get your feeling for if there's things that you see that, you know. The one thing about this calendar is we're going to have this, these tabs changed because this makes it look like community events, this one's like we can sort of. It's one to like, it's one to, you know, kind of keep things. There's, there's little things that we want to kind of, I think for the most part, I'm happy with it, but...
Is there a place for people to sign up for boards, do they either?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask.
Um, well, that was, let's see, there how do I?
There's still the application for it, but there's not an online.
Well, and that's why... Yeah, and we could definitely do that. Um, what was it? Uh, we were gonna, we were talking about doing under how do I, we were talking about doing get involved as a heading. And then, you know, if there are board committees, volunteer opportunities, then the, to be, under that, how do I get involved?
Yeah, I mean, that would be, because there are any departments that use volunteers or you want, you know, civic contribution, then that would be a place to do it.
Yeah, that was something we were actually, we discussed the other day. So, um, but we could definitely make a, an electronic form for the board committees. I, we need to know who that would need to go to and what's in that. But that's definitely, we can pretty much do, you know, as many electronic forms as we want. We can do whatever we want.
Unless if you want to bring up social media, do you care?
Yeah, um, well, I'm, what else probably end up doing is, um, just, I'm publishing these buttons for now. But, um, we do, I think, want to do social media. Um, just some of the reading up that I've been doing on it, research I've been doing. I think we need to have a social media game plan. We need to have a policy in place for how we use social media. I think, um, it's just, to me, it makes more sense just than going out there and having everybody post whatever they want on there. So I just feel like we need to do a little bit of, uh, research first and maybe, I know there are a few, I've seen a few classes or seminars on how to use social media. There's some useful resources out there. So I'd like to do a little research before we jump in, see first with it.
You know, where, so how do I, I didn't, I didn't see, so how do I pay my taxes? I didn't see that.
Yeah, there are, like I said, there are... There are some that aren't on there yet. Yeah. There are definitely some things that aren't on there yet that they didn't, so pay my taxes is one of the ones that we, we need to do.
But still, I'm, Larry, he's got his electric thing.
Yeah, but it needs to be here first and foremost, which is where people are gonna go. I mean, these are things that everybody kind of, I've been looking at the website and I've got a lot of stuff that I've been reading through. More eyes help me to kind of spot these things that maybe I'm missing, so, um, so I appreciate anybody who's, who's looking at it to pick all, like I said, this is a, the production website is not, um, we're not changing over until, our double live date is February 25th, if that's still okay with you guys. And everything's looking good. They were wanting, um, to know design changes, um, so...
So what's the double live, I'm sorry?
February 22nd. So the design changes is something that I really need to get to that in the next week or so. But as far as content, it's that stuff that now we know how to work on and, um, we can, we can make those changes.
Looks good to me. I mean, I guess if, uh, we have emergency situations, we go under news and announcements.
Um, emergency alerts will go on the top. Yeah, we will have, um, the ability to, to, um, let's see, it's called the alert center. And, um, Larry has an alert center, Phil has the alert center and the sheriff's office does. And they'll be able to stop in, they'll be able to start an end date or time if, if that is something that's needed. And it'll, it'll have a black bar at the top of the webpage and it'll flash along the top. And it's not something we want to use lightly, it's something that, you know, we don't want, we want to make sure that it's an actual real emergency. But, um, we also have the notification center, that's something else that we can utilize for other types of kind of important things.
That's kind of more or less, you know, of course, we may have some emergencies or Bill may have some news or something or Larry may have some road closures. I mean, it's not something that somebody really wants to be hit with, I don't think. But, I mean, they could go under news and announcements or something where people could go hit our webpage and see it right off of that. I think, I think that's kind of...
In the same way, I think with the social media, like the paid phone, GIs, the road closure, the pass flooding, people see it.
Yeah, people, I mean, they, they need to know what they want to know.
Yeah.
They get draw people to use our website more and just check it out.
Yeah. And like I said, they can, they can choose what they want to get alerted on. They can unsubscribe if they decide they're getting more than they wanted or they decide they're not interested anymore. So, um, that's a good thing.
I think one of the things too, Bill, I might look at, just with all the flooding that we've had, maybe we can have a link to Bagno Dam or some of the rivers so that we can monitor those river levels.
Yeah, that would've been nice around Christmas because I get to laugh a calling two hours. Well, afterwards, I didn't know a lot of people have little pictures in old city or not all of them were.
That's Bagno, but, um...
And in the alert center, that was something that we can add. We can add photographs, say if there's a picture of the dam that rose or something. Um, we can add hyperlinks to more information, um, things like that, so, um...
So I, I think overall it looks great. I mean, of course, it's gonna be kind of a work in progress probably for a while.
Well, and we always need to be keeping it alive and keeping it, you know, updated and, um, fresh content. Same thing if we started doing social media, we can't just do social media and just leave it there. We've got to have something that makes people want to, you know, subscribe to it, so...
Now, we gotta talk to our communities about their tying in with us. I'd, I'd like to play up the schools too because, you know, after those ratings, I mean, our school's rated really high.
Well, that's something we, you know, it's just how far we want to go. Like other residents, if we want, maybe if we wanted to do, you know, the, the cities, um, you know, how to use your water, just very, you know, just how far back we want to go.
There were several departments that had links to, I mean, several departments had links to the same places, basically school sites and stuff like that. I couldn't tell you which ones they were right now, but those were links on some different pages that, you know, maybe we want to, if we have too many people do the same thing, maybe we want to more standardize the one common place that you can link to versus every place.
Yeah, so that might be, you know, just to have a map, I'm saying not only schools, show them their district. And we get quite a few calls out there, if those forks, roads, park farms, you know, someone moves in, they're not real sure which park or not. We just have a map of, um, of, uh...
And all that's on the, um, now, maybe it's a different...
If you just, like, there's, uh, you know, some older PDF or something just showing, so they get a general idea real quick.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, we get new people relocating into this area, so I figure, you know, if they pull up Cole County and say, well, I want to live in Cole County, they want to live over in Columbia and commute over or something, you want to give them all the information you can on why they should live.
Yeah, and like I said, this is a living document.
I think, uh...
What he said, there's nothing else that has links to it, you know?
Yeah. There also needs to be a list somewhere, just something like, if you move to Cole County, these are the things you need to do. Because most people don't know they have to fill out an assessment form when they get here.
Good idea.
That's a good idea.
If you're, yeah, if you're new to Cole County.
Yeah, something like that.
If I have a couple of...
Sam is thirsty. That's a Cole County medal award.
They have that Lions Club, yeah, we get fined every...
Yeah, and people can also, if they see an article or something, they can share.
The one other good thing about this is everything that gets put on here, you could put an expiration date on it too. So, uh, if you put out some kind of notice, well, we have things that never get taken off because the layers have to take them off. But here you just say, you don't run this for two weeks and two weeks it's gone, so, uh...
So do y'all have a committee that's gonna decide what goes on and what goes off, what goes where?
Well, pretty much that's the reason we got the departments involved though. It's kind of their, a lot of it's department-specific items.
Because I just heard about six million things that we can add to this company.
Oh, yeah.
Man, it's fine that we have the link to, let's say, public works and you can go to GIs and you can have a link from there to the fire departments, to the lake level stages. You know, the people that have a property at the river, but I would be figuring out where to get that information from. So, yeah, we have it accessible.
Yeah, and like I said, I think...
On the front page, keep it clean.
Yeah, I think, um, the mega menus are gonna be kind of where people, and they can also do the search.
Yeah, the search is supposed to, yeah.
It's not wired up yet, so...
But that's, if it's publishable, the search is supposed to be able to find.
I'd still like to see a general information table.
I think that's a great idea. I think that's something we need to do.
General information.
For what? For new people to Cole County, what they would want. Yeah, um, and I think, you know, it seems like we've got a really good core group of editor, of website editors right now with the different departments. And I think it'd probably be a good idea for, um, for us to have, I don't know, monthly or quarterly kind of informal work session, work day, you know, to kind of get together and discuss things that we want to, you know, tackle or if somebody has problems, you know, trying to accomplish something. I think that would probably be really helpful for people to have that opportunity to work together with other people that are doing kind of the same thing. But I think, you know...
Hey, well, is there a way to make the news and outcomes that people would get?
You have to scroll down, yeah. And it's part of the responsiveness of the page is you're gonna, it's not like the old, um, kind of feeling that you have to not be able, not have to scroll that much because, you know, that's not kind of how these new websites, responsive websites work. It's just, it rearranges things where when you scroll, you know, you can see everything. And this, this laptop, the resolution is set different because whenever I open up my computer, the homepage, you can, you can see it a little bit more. It's just gonna depend on everybody's computers, it'll be different. All I have is just any questions or comments. I don't know, who do we think would be the best person to do the approval of the community calendar? I figured, but I just didn't want to ask him. That's fine.
I'm just gonna be the guy that's...
That's a good question, too.
Because if you get, you're gonna turn away.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We might check with the, I think they have a community calendar on there. The Chamber of Man also have one there.
Yeah, I think they're...
I think the biggest thing, once it's such a year, that means more, more than one, one person, I think.
Say a church rummage sale, maybe, or somebody, no? Okay.
Not for, not for profits, but you have, there's so many not-for-profit things going on now. I've been getting hit up like three times a day for, for gifts and door prizes and, and, uh...
Like trivia night things and, uh, all that kind of stuff, yeah. Well, we'll just have to work that out, kind of what criteria you're gonna need.
Jeff's right, we are gonna need to come up with some kind of guideline. So, you know, St. Thomas wants to put their country hymn breakfast, that's a tradition. Got, got to do that and parish picnic.
Well, I was gonna say, if you do the, do the picnic or some kind of festival, you know, maybe that's, you know...
This country hymn should be coming up in March.
That's pretty good. Testament, that's...
That's not a Cole County.
I think, I think this chamber also just had something on social media class or something on that. And maybe that's, you can just contact with them or do social media here and see if they can, if we can get that passed to the government. Talk to the county.
Yeah, I definitely think we definitely need to have some kind of standards in place for social media handling. I guess I keep the ideas coming in, um, we're still working on it, we're still going through and looking for issues that need to be, things we need to add. There's lots of moving parts, so, you know, more eyes for that. You guys, they get my...
Sounds like a lot of this is an agile new thing that we need to just get the list of those hobbies so we get the links set up.
Did you scroll down there, um, page? Is there a way to keep the, uh, the top frozen?
No.
You mean the picture?
Well, so when she goes all the way up to the top, it says Cole County and has all those icons or drop-down menus across it. Yeah.
I don't think so, but I'll ask them.
Man, it just seems like it'd be easier to navigate if, if it did say that way. You could, you could look at the events and then you could pop back up and pull down a, not, one of those drop-down menus.
And those shortcuts are on, the buttons are on, um, all the pages where they can get that, um, they want. Depending on the level you're on, we'll be, uh, what these will be.
Hit a circle letter or hit control something because they're...
Coming on that, they'll start a picture.
Well, and everybody has their picture on there. But, yeah, I, I would like to see everybody.
I did like to add a comment, uh, thank the commission for doing this, but not many computer persons, it's very easy to manage this. I think the people find it very, uh, great way to, uh, people believe in this.
And then these people are gonna close it. So we're gonna find information.
Well, that's the critical part about keeping it current too. I mean, once it gets outdated, then it's not useful, so...
Very. I heard we go, that's the one for W is just keep it up to date. Oh, that's good.
Do we have anything else before we go and close session?
About their, um, committees and boards, Debbie, you can mail that so we have some openings and have a chance to go through all that.
Yeah, it looks like really on our Cole County residential special services, you've got five that are, that are expired. That only leaves four, I don't know what they're for.
Are they not wanted?
Being reappointed?
I don't know. See, you've got the chair and you've got the vice chair, who are, who are, uh...
What's his name, Jim Casey?
Jim Casey.
You know him? Do you want to get with him and find out if they're going to do it, so?
Yeah, he is, he is, I think a while back, he had a couple, uh, applications.
Well, when he figured out, you've got one, two, three that are, that are...
Yeah, I'll, I'll call...
Three of them in February of this year, so...
I'll call Jim Casey.
If you want to talk to him, find out if those will be reappointed, just put down next agenda. If they don't, then we need to find somebody to fill them. Otherwise, if you have five expire.
I don't think he's got a court on five, no one does.
Of course, but the board wouldn't. They'll be vacant, just remember to show them.
So, is there vacant or the chairman of the vice chair?
We get, uh, do we get Greg an answer on that printer center, that sewer?
No, because I didn't know exactly what was going on with it. I saw, I was on that email earlier, too, and I asked him about it. Because now they're going to cut through the concrete, it's got a board underneath of it.
Basically, uh, putting a concrete wall to hold a fence from the outside for here.
Or, uh, did Michael see this, has he had any input on it, because he's the one that's going to be thinking tonight?
Yeah, I don't know.
So, Brett was here a minute ago, I asked him about it a while ago, so I just put it on, uh, agenda for next week.
Yeah, I'll check with Michael.
Okay, we'll do it. Are they going to put some nice concrete up, or are they going to just slap it back?
It's just a footing and wall, and it sits on top of the wall and the rest of the grass inside it, just an outside player. So, basically, all they're going to do is cut, take some of the fence down, cut some of the concrete out, dig it, and then pour it all back, that's the best way to do it.
So, you're going to look stupid?
No.
Or they're putting a new concrete versus the same stuff? I'll tell them to get some dented Rex along there.
From the inside, you see about this much concrete.
I don't know, it's going to bother me.
Well, if we get, we get...
I don't have a problem with them doing it.
If we, if we get some money out of it, we can pay for part of that parking lot.
Yeah, I'd probably buy this. I'd get money out of it for it.
They're going to give us fifty percent of the cost savings.
They're going to pay us money of what they say.
Yeah.
Why?
Well, because we can either make them for it, yeah. The contractor's giving the city a savings, and so whatever that savings is, they'll split with us. So, we're going to get money for allowing them to do this.
Is it a bribe?
No. It's cheaper for the contractor to do it this way than to set up a big board machine.
It's not cheaper for the contractor, it's cheaper for the city.
Well, sure.
Contractor, try to carry the weight, they'll do it either way.
Well, I, I told Greg, as long as they put it back basically the way it was, and we make some money on it, I don't have any problem with it.
I don't care if they put it back the way it was, and I don't care if I'm, us making money on it. I think it's a good city-county relationship to say, sure, y'all want to save some money on it, cut through it, ain't no, just being a good neighbor.
Since they want to pay us.
I know, I understand that, it's another two, if we can get a new freezer for, for us.
Are they going to pay us any of the revenues off of their sewer line that they're putting through?
I'm just trying to be nice, soft. Harder to hear.
Good point.
So, that is...
I, I think we'll look at it, I don't know, I say. Back on the hill.
I don't know.
Do you want to make talk to Michael, who pays first?
Make sure he's fine with us doing that wall, or there's going to be some other things going with it. I don't remember what it looks like, right there at that back wall, or that fence.
About an eight-foot wide vinyl fence, sitting on top of a, about an eight-inch wide concrete wall, and it's, you know, on from the inside, it may stick up out of here on the foot. I don't assume the footing's a couple feet deep.
I drove by Sunday, but you couldn't really tell, because knowing the snow was.
Where the snow was, there wasn't any snow on Sunday, saying...
There's still snow, some places.
Where are you at?
There's still snow someplace. Before the sun does, when the sun has melted, there's still some piles of snow yesterday.
I went by there on Sunday, too, I didn't see any snow.
What about the parking for, uh, jury? We never did pursue, looking at one of the empty lots over there that Butcher ain't has. We can look at that again. So, is the city getting them spots?
It'd be like he had them spots.
Yeah, they, right now, they're just moving, they're moving them, which actually I think is better for jurors, to that lot behind the, uh, chamber. And so, basically, at least they're not walking up that...
Okay, so now they're up here instead of down there.
Uh-huh.
That helps.
Yeah.
What do they get charged for that?
What does it get charged?
Uh, state or us, or, I don't know, before the city let us just use that, because...
Well, in the state, the city hasn't charged us that much.
Now, somewhere...
What service for these in?
This is where we were before, it was up here, and then that was down there.
So, what are we getting charged now?
Nothing. Brett would like you, is that, he'd like that.
Sure, we're not getting paid or charged anything.
We are for our employees, in part, there's jurors, though.
Okay, you're sure we're not getting charged for the jurors?
That's what Brett told me. He said they were just moving, he said it, it is getting tight, so somewhere down the road, if, if the larva bishop property ever gets settled, I think it probably would, would be smart of us to, to create our own surplus lot, who knows when that's going to be?
Well, we can go talk to her, Chris brought that up, a year ago, didn't you? It's been longer than that. Because there are some right on Massachin, in that alley, that would work, that would be spots that would be, though.
Are they open months right now, or is it...
No, they're...
No, we'd have to do some work, but...
But the town, though, what's that?
We do it now, or we wait until they say, oh, we're on the broom, and now you've got to do something in the next three months? And then in three months, everybody's like, give you, because they know you have to have them. Now, we can, we can get some guys with those shovels and clean it up, public works will do a favor.
You got a chair in the building?
Get some tannin right, we'll take care of that.
I want my AS400, uh... Can we do that now?
Well, you don't ask first. So, do we want to look at that parking lot, or just wait to see what John says? I'm going to delete his email, going in one, two...
I, I think we're good.
I, I think right now we're good.
Okay.
Somewhere down the road, you know, Brett was saying we need to look at some other option, but, uh, he's trying to get us to park in the parking garage, and then we get a twenty-five percent discount.
Okay, so then who pays that?
We would, they're the, the course would look...
Exactly, so now we look at this over here, we have something in line before it happens to them. So, do we want to look at it, or not?
I think we pay for quite a bit of parking, so, I mean, I don't think it'd be a bad idea, but, I mean, what, what cost? I mean, you start talking about buying a building, or...
I would say, we, we pay fair shares to the city for parking for the wood, and...
Right.
Yeah, I was surprised what we did pay, yeah.
I mean, if we buy a building, then we got to tear it down, then we got to put our parking lot in it. I mean, we're talking, you know, tear something down, it's going to cost you thirty, forty grand. If it doesn't have a ton of asbestos and everything else in it, you got to do all that first. I don't know what we're going to give the lot, and the parking lot's probably going to cost you. You know how big it is, fifty to a hundred.
How much we're spending a year on park?
Eighteen thousand.
It definitely costs a little longer, even if we had a, if we had a hundred and fifty grand in it.
But how many parking spots are you going to get, and are you going to put the employees that you're currently paying for spots in there, or are you putting the jurors over there?
Probably both. I think originally, what I had heard talking with Mark, was they were actually not only doing that three-story building up at Dancer's Alley, but, but going all the way to Capitol Avenue, because I guess that first house there on Capitol Avenue, behind the library slot, is pretty, uh, dilapidated, too. And it would be a question taking both of those and just making that...
Because if we're not going to get the forty spots out of it, it's not going to work, but, I don't know, we'll get much more than that out of there. I don't remember when we had that up, if that was going to get, if we can get a hundred spots out of it, it'd probably be worth working there.
I don't think this is one of them here.
I mean, forty, twenty inside, and...
I don't remember what that lot was.
Forty spots might be pushing.
How wide are our parking places? Ten?
I was, I said fifteen, but it's probably, probably ten or twelve, maybe.
Ten probably tight, twelve. Greg, how wide are our parking places?
Here's twelve.
Twelve, is that pretty much standard?
Twelve by twenty, probably, with probably a twenty foot in between them, that's my math.
Pretty close, twenty-five, here's tight.
Yeah, I was going to say twenty, twenty-four, go give you some room.
But the angle would be probably, the angle would probably get less.
Twenty would be tight.
Probably look at, I thought, I'm sure.
Yeah.
I think going all with the bishop property or not.
Kansas McMillan stepped in, too, they're looking at some other options, but from what I've heard, it could be...
I wouldn't worry about them, though, we can go talk to her ourselves on our own. It doesn't have, that's the last thing I want to do, is have the city along to go talk to her about helping buy a lot.
Well, they're looking at all of her properties.
She's hidden from the city.
She's hard to get all the...
Way out. I'm saying, what? The city comes looking for me.
Yeah, how many properties does she actually own there?
It's like around thirty.
I was going to say it's thirty-something.
Two right there, next to each other, next to that, there's three.
On this side, like on the...
On the other side of that, uh, the library.
She's on, I'm, it's going down on Capitol and Adams, she owns those, going down. There's that one that has the kind of the wrought iron fence around it, but most of the houses where you see the windows and doors are bordered out.
But then doesn't she own them on the other side of Capitol?
Yeah, she owns down Jackson.
Yeah.
She owns down Jackson, she owns, yeah.
We'll ask she the picker that had all of it, looked like, you know, when you're playing Monopoly with your kids, they take everything and kick your butt, that's kind of what it looks like. She's got a bunch of, there was a whole bunch of spaces outlined for hers, and, but we were just talking about it, not only here, Chris brought it up, so, we got that email, that's why I just wanted to bring it up, that it's something we want to look at, see how much we actually are spending, it's eighteen thousand a year.
Is it at least eighteen?
I was thinking, or closer, twenty-five.
And then we have...
So, your return on investment would be, um, eight years, eight, ten years, you pay for it?
Probably, we have to pay for those buildings.
Do it, I have no last watching.
That was Charles Hartsman.
Can you find out how much we're spending for...
Spending on parking, eighteen thousand, is that what we budgeted every month?
And then if we have to start paying for the jurors' parking places at some point, then that's going to, how much that's going to be?
Oh, Brett was just recommending that would be a better, um, I'm like, well, free is, free is, that free is better, and, and just the fact that they don't have to walk up that hill, I think is, is, uh, is going to be better for them.
You're hearing things, Judge.
Hey, hello, Judge.
Hey.
Hey, can y'all handle a trolley?
I'm sure we could. You want us to start operating one?
It's a retirement job.
Yeah.
Sounded good. I was talking about it, I kind of stepped out.
So, you're going to retire and drive the trolley?
Debbie, yeah?
Debbie's going to retire and drive the trolley?
No, she's not. No, she's not. No, she's not.
Same pay, I'll be good.
That's aggravation.
Yeah, I'll take it for sure.
This is, uh, social duties.
I don't know if I can get my CBL, though.
Now, we'll get your eyes checked. Are you talking about Sedell?
How?
Do we have any other issues?
I've got one.
We don't want to talk about that.
I know you do. A lot of that shot's will take care of them, you know?
Shot to the jack?
Kind of sell out, and...
I ate some mold the other day, that stuff tastes good. I thought it was supposed to be good for you. I've never seen an orange that was green. I thought maybe that's just the way it was, but I think it was mold on the inside.
And you survived.
Remember you had the blood red...
I was hungry.
I'll have a little of that, you're fine.
I have green, I had roughage for lunch or something, like, packed like six leaves of lunch.
Going to closing session, some personality.
I second the motion, roll call, please.
Liam?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.